And it's not going to be limited to the number of produced by the manufacturers. And also they're going to allow potentially a credit for if you buy a used plug-in vehicle. So stay tuned, we'll see what actually survives in the final bill if if it ever gets there at this point. The last point I want to make is something I heard from the meeting the other night with the selectmen about a sustainability director. I think it's something that we as that the department should look into in terms of, you know, because I think it'd be something that would be very important to cover the the four towns that we have here. I would recommend that maybe we look, the department look into that. I don't know how the board would feel about that. I can tell you that the COPs 26 summit that took place this weekend, the International Accounting Standards Board, or the correction, International Financial Reporting Standards Board, came out and they created a new board called the the standard, the Sustainability Accounting Board Standards. And they're potentially considering on the international side, requiring companies disclose their sustainability, their policies, their strategies. So I think it's, you know, something for the the board to consider, to direct the department to consider whether, you know, to look in the possibility of actually bringing on board maybe somebody as a sustainability position to cover the to cover the four towns at this point. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Uh, Bob, it's Dave. I don't know if we're if we're commenting at this point, but unless anybody else wants to, I did have a quick follow-up on that.
Sure, sure, Dave. I don't I don't think there's anybody else but us on tonight, so go for it.
Talking to each other and YouTube video. So thanks for that. Phil, thanks for your comments. Yes, we all have to work towards sustainability. I listened to that same discussion and just was left thinking while we all need to do that, the, I don't know that a RMLD staff member would have the like the authority to kind of be able to implement anything on the town sides, even though I get the idea of it. There's no reason why anybody in in a town, you know, sort of hierarchy would have to sort of listen to anything. I mean, that doesn't sound right, but you know what I mean? It's just organizations work in a certain way and either either the person reports at a high level within a town and has the ear of the manager or they don't. RMLD already offers a lot of great programs that the towns can take advantage of today. So that is my take. It's it's a good idea. How do we get it done? I would just have some concerns that a staff member at RMLD is not really empowered to tell towns what to do. It's always, so anyway, that's just my two cents. And the other, I just wanted to ask, you know, we missed the meeting cycle last month and I'm just curious why we had to miss a whole month because we do have a lot of business to take care of. I know there was a storm that day, but it wasn't that big of an impact. So I don't know if there was a reason why we had to skip a whole month's cycle.
Well, I, there was the storm, for me, it was pretty big. I, I was up this week. And then obviously we ran it to town meeting. So I think it just trying to squeeze a day in almost became impossible.
Okay, I was only looking at the the emails back and forth. I know you were out because of your job, but there were still four of us and I know Phil was ready to step in. I guess all I'm saying is it'd be good to keep to our, make sure we have a meeting every month. And I understand there was that day had some issues, but I just wanted to get that comment out there. And I think we 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 still have to meet our goal of calling a joint meeting with the town select board, I think, right? And that's still going to happen this year or maybe January. Or anyway, just just want to put it out there, maybe you can address it at the next meeting, if not now.
Okay, um, I I did have one comment. I know I felt extremely embarrassed that Marlena, Colleen and Greg did did go to the board in person and I was the only remote guy that didn't get the message. Like, oh, yeah, that was kind of embarrassing. It's like, I, but I apologize to you three. I should have, I should have been there, but totally, I'm so used to Zoom, I just totally missed that.
Exactly. What I was referring to is a joint board, the two boards, as opposed to just staff members attending a town meeting. So we could discuss any areas of mutual, one of them would be what Phil just talked about, you know, is that and others, you know, we've talked about the real estate piece and is there anything to talk about there? And I think unless we get the two boards together, you know, to really talk as a group, you know, it's hard to move anything like that forward. So that's all.
I mean, just to share just one item, I mean, in the old days, we we actually made it a point, we actually met with the finance committee. We haven't met with the finance committee probably in years at this point, so.
Hi, Colleen.
I have updates in mind on both of the topics of the joint committee and finance committee. So next topic, I will talk about those.
Yeah, and 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 perfect timing with Jackie here, Phil. That's great. That's great. Okay. All right, moving on, um, let's go down to item number three, which is, oh, I got messed up here, sorry.
The minutes of the next one.
Approval of the minutes of, uh, July 19th and August 12th. Phil, if I could hand it over to you.
The board of commissioners approved the meeting minutes of July 19th, 2021, and August 12th, 2021, meeting on the recommendation of general manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. President, I.
Talbot, I.
Garland, it'd be the I.
It's called the I. All right, passes four to zero. A report on the citizens advisory board meeting on October 21st and November 9th. Marlena?
Um, well, after.
Dennis kind of covered everything, so.
Yeah.
More we need to cover.
They pass both. Motion's three zero.
Okay.
All right, Marlena, I didn't mean to over, I didn't mean to overspeak on you.
I'm sorry if I overspoke on you.
No, no, I think I overspoke on you, so I apologize.
Okay, good. All right, moving down to item number five, the general manager's report. Colleen?
Thanks. Yeah, I know we have a full agenda, so I'll go quickly. Virtual air source heat pump owners panel, we held it on November 9th. We had a great turnout of about 80 attendees. It's available on the RMLD's website. Joyce, the community TV stations, please check that out. We have a lot of people that call in about transitioning to air source heat pump. We have a great rebate program. Um, the virtual EV workshop, the second one, since the first one was well-attended, we want to run a second one. We tentatively have it scheduled for February 1st. The format is to be determined. We're not sure if we're going to have it in in virtual or in person yet. Uh, we are in the design phase of the technology for the AV rooms so that we can start running hybrid and rolling people back for in-person meetings. But we we just want to make sure that that technology is is in. The 22 historical calendar is going to be available mid-December. Joyce can send out a post of where those can be picked up at. The elementary art contest is ongoing and we typically have those awards in February. We're not sure if that will be in person or virtual, which means that voting on the children's electricity, safety, reliability, art and in the themes will be upcoming. So please look for those votes. Uh, press releases are all drafted and ready to go pending approvals this evening. Uh, so you'll see them on 11/18. That will be the 2022 rates and the offshore wind opportunity that Greg's going to be talking about a little later on in the program. On November 9th, Chair Coulter, myself and Greg, as as Chair Coulter mentioned, we discussed with the board of selectmen, the proposed rates that were approved by the CAB. Um, we also, I was able to obtain the EV license for us to install three EV charging stations in three locations in the town of Reading. The way that license ended up landing is it's a 15-year license in which time if the town were to ask us to remove the charger, we would split the cost back to the state that we would owe them for the grant monies. If it's asked to be removed in greater than three years but less than 15, the RMLD would would pay to remove its equipment, the town would pay for the resurfacing. And then from there after 15 years, it's one year at a time extension. Wilmington license is in discussions right now. We're hoping to get those signed and then we can move the construction bids out. Um, just a couple more things. The other thing that I was able to obtain from Karen Herrick and and the town manager today is what's called the EV site selection. We run a committee inside RMLD and currently we have Ryan Percival from Reading. We're looking for someone from planning and so they assigned Aaron Schaefer, who's the Economic Development Director, as well as Ryan, who's understands construction. And then you have us who understand the electrical service construction end. And this way, as we start to construct these grants that we've already received, we can start looking at the feasibility and vetting out the next sites that each of the four towns is looking to install charges on on public property. The, uh, let's see, um, so Karen had asked me to set up a meeting with the finance committee in order for me to give an update on the, and lower tax payments to the towns. And I asked the town manager and he said, uh, March 2022 would look great for them. So Jackie, you can chime in on that, but that's, so Erica was going to set up a doodle poll for sometime in March, if that works for you guys, and we can, we can get everyone there. Looks good? Okay, great. We're looking forward to giving to that presentation. And if there's other things besides just the pilot, we're more than happy to do that as well. So maybe we can check in, me, you and Wendy, and we'll make sure that we give a a good presentation to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Erica is also sending out a doodle poll for the Ash Street tour. So at that meeting on November 9th, I asked the board of selectmen if they would like to come down and tour the Ash Street. I know we've had a couple of economic development visions that have been presented through grants through the MAPC with the town. But I'm not sure how many people really know what the campus looks like, what are the buildings, where is our storage, how big are we? So she's sending out a doodle pour, doodle poll for that. And we're hoping to do that maybe the first week of December to squeeze that in before the holidays. And then she is also going to be sending out a doodle poll for a joint meeting between the board of selectmen and the board of commissioners. Uh, the first agenda on the item would be to talk about economic development specifically in the Ash Street campus area. So if there are other agenda items for that joint committee meeting, please let me know. Um, or let Chair Coulter know and we can have Erica put together an agenda. Um, right now we're just working on dates that that are available for the majority of the folks. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I wonder if we could use the auditorium or the conference room for that meeting after the tour. It might be a good opportunity to at least have some somewhat of a joint session.
After the tour, we were trying to do the tour in the morning in the, around the first week of December and then a big joint committee in January. Would you, do you want to try to come, are you asking me to try to combine them?
Well, I was just wondering if if you're going to have a couple, I don't know how many people are going to be in attendance, but I was just throwing it out there. If you had a bunch of people there.
Right. What what I was thinking that if if we give a tour of what the campus looks like, then it gives them a couple of weeks over the holiday to kind of maybe have some thought to what it is for economic development that they would like to look at in this area and to be able to formulate questions that maybe they can send forehand and I can work with staff to come up with some answers so that when we do have the joint meeting, they may be asking for some presentations. Um, that's what I was thinking, but I'll, I'll, whatever your pleasure is, we can, we can make that happen.
No, probably not a bad idea.
Yeah, this is a check.
Yes, Phil.
That, that all sounds perfect. I just wanted to thank you for doing that and I took the gun with my question earlier, so thank you. All that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, Dave.
Okay, jumping right over to Wendy, 2022 budget presentation.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Hamid Jafari, Director of Engineering Operations for Reading District Light Department. And thank you for providing me an opportunity to go over RMLD's proposed CY22 budget. So there are approximately, there are actually, there are 40 items in the budget that you know, they're listed. And I'm sure you have the list of those in front of you. If you don't, I don't know if Kathleen could put up the budget on the, the spreadsheet. But these 40 items, there are some of them, they are new projects and some of them, they are the ones that, you know, you already have the backgrounds on them. So I'm just going to go over the select items that either they're new or you, if you have some new informa, information for you. Uh, so if there are anything else that you know outside you would like to discuss, by all means, bring that up and then I will give you information to the best I can. Okay, so I want to bring your attention to line item number six on page 25. The first, first, the line items from one through seven, they're facilities, they're facilities related. So I'm going to go over the line item number six on page 25. We are asking the board to authorize us to spend.
Excuse me, Hamid.
Yes.
Can you pause for one second? They're having a little technical difficulty with getting the sharing up.
Okay.
One second, please.
All right, sure. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's it. Thank you, Kathleen. You can see that now.
Great, good, great, good, yeah. That's it.
Sorry, Hamid, I think we're good now.
That's all right. Thank you so much.
See that?
Appreciate. Yeah, everybody could say. Thank you. That's very clear.
Okay.
So line item number six on page 25 of your budget book. Uh, we are asking authorization for spending $106,292 on security upgrades at all sites. Just to give you a background, in CY21 this year, physical security assessment was done by Burns and McDonald, the consultants, to identify NERC mandated compliance areas in order to improve the existing security systems and equipment to include like expanding the cameras at all RMLD facilities using the cloud and IP services, parameter fencing signage at the substations and different areas of the Ash Street campus, vegetation management, physical security, operating procedures, updated employee access control and, you know, and the projects like that for the security related. Uh, the result of the study was, you know, they made the three recommendations in three categories. Actually, I made lots of recommendations in three categories, sorry, a short, medium and long range, which facilities will be implementing these recommendations. So that's for this project. The next one is the line item number seven on page 27 for $744,000 and $49, $49. That's for rolling stocks. The the scheduled vehicle replacement is following the RMLD's Fuel Efficiency Operating Procedure number 1907, which is based on fleet assessment and RMLD's electrification program. In CY22, $350, $375,000 is planned to purchase a small SUV, van and trouble truck. Uh, please note that, you know, $369,000 is a amount that you see is carryover from CY2021 on a material handler for $284,000 that was ordered in CY2021 and it's going to be delivered in CY22 and a dump truck for $85,000, which is pending approval by the RMLD board for delivery in CY22. That's coming up as one of the items that, you know, the bed, bedable items that, bedded items that need board approval after this, uh, this me, this meeting. So the next category is it's IRD item. Actually, there is only one item, that's line item number eight there on page 31. We're asking for $744,000 to spend on EV supply equipment. And please note that, you know, about approximately $177,286,000, that is a grant money, which $78,150 of the amount is the mass grant for L2 chargers and $99,136,000 is for L3 chargers. In CY22, five L2 chargers are all planned to be installed in Reading, three of them on three sites and Wilmington on two sites throughout the current grant. And there are five L3 fast chargers will be installed, which four, they're going to be at retail locations and one is going to be at the Reading library. The return of investment on those are 11 to 13 years at 22 cents per kilowatt hours. The L2 chargers, they take approximately eight hours charging while the L3 chargers, the fast chargers, they basically are under an hour. So moving forward from CY23 to CY27, RMLD plans to install two to four L3 chargers with. within its service territory at retail and municipal locations to be determined. So the project supports the climate bill electrification mandate. That's our I R D. The next uh category is the I T, which are basically the light uh line items from nine to fourteen. I want to draw your attention to line item number eleven on page thirty nine. In C Y twenty two, we are asking hundred thousand dollars to be spent and C Y twenty three hundred two, hundred thousand followed the following year, which is for customer portal mobile application. The plan is to develop a two-way facing customer service portal for R M L D customers to access news, usage, billing, events, U A N rebate status and the rebate uh comparison. The next line, uh, the next one is the line item number twelve on page forty one in C Y twenty two. We're asking to spend uh three hundred seventy thousand dollars on I T infrastructure enhancement, which two projects are planned in anticipation of growing system applications and databases such as the T L M and A M I uh M D M. Uh, R M L D also plans to expand its virtual environment servers and the needs to redesign and enhance its current uh network systems, which, which includes network switches, the hardware and some of the softwares. The next one is a line item number thirteen for uh I T group. On page forty three, we're asking three hundred and five thousand dollars for I T security. Uh, R M L D, as you know, is continuously monitoring both the cyber and internal environments to assess and respond to threats. Uh, and R M L D needs to in, eh, implement and add, update the multi-factor authentication, install uh firewalls, the network visibility, security information, event manager, uh to manage the entire system and other miscellaneous security eh initiatives. So that's for the I T group, basically. The next uh items uh are items from fifteen to number fifty. These are basically the engineering and operations. Uh, so I want to draw your attention to line number seventeen on page fifty five. That's a relay protection upgrade. It is a three-year project totaling uh three hundred thousand dollars. Seventy thousand uh is gonna be spent in C Y twenty one and hundred fifty thousand C Y twenty two and eighty thousand for C Y twenty three. Uh, per N E R C and N P C C Directory, one national grid and ever source, uh they are, they are required to install high-speed relaying uh in order to clear the faults faster. Uh, that's gonna be installed uh at National Grid Tuxbury Station twenty two and Ever Source Woburn Street, Woburn Substation twenty, two hundred eleven and R M L D Substation four on the two incoming one fifteen K V lines at sub four. The plan started in C Y twenty one and it's gonna continue until C Y twenty three to complete. Uh, so for this purpose, R M L D hired P L M to redesign its one fifteen K V relay to coordinate and sequence them with the National Grid and Oversource relays after their design is completed. They're going through the design process right now, so we're gonna have to wait until the design process is completed, so we can proceed with that. Uh, the next one is the line item number eighteen on page fifty seven for seven hundred sixty four thousand dollars. This is the project for pad mount switchgear upgrades at parks, industrial parks. This project started in F Y eighteen and continues to C Y twenty three to replace twenty seven aged uh switch gears at industrial parks. Since the inception of this program, fourteen switches have been replaced and it is expected to replace or complete seven more in uh C Y twenty one by next, by next month, basically. In C Y twenty uh two, we got six more switches that they gotta be replaced. Uh, four, it's gonna be uh at the parks, the regular switches and the two, uh they're gonna be motor operated units that are planned to be replaced. The next one is line item number nineteen and twenty. These two line items that relate to the new Wilmington substations.
Um, Hamid, sorry to interrupt, but I think the uh, the uh screen shares moved ahead a page. You're not on, not on line nineteen.
Our, our, item number, I moved ahead. Could you go back on, on the previous page, please? Yes. Yeah, there you go. Line item number nineteen on page fifty nine, new Wilmington substation. So C Y twenty two, we are asking for six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the land and hundred ninety five thousand dollars for system impact study and engineering and permitting. So as you know, the R M L D's existing uh Wildwood Wilmington substation is antiquated and far away from the load center in Ballard Vale area in Wilmington. The R M L D is negotiating to purchase the land uh uh from near the uh one fifteen K V lines. The substation will be designed and equipped with two sixty M B A transformers and one fifteen K V switchgear to feed Ballard Vale area and also provide load relief uh from Station three and Station four. Uh, R M L D has assigned a letter of intent and agreement uh with the landowner to proceed with surveying and conducting phase one invent, environmental assessments. So uh, the land purchase and permitting will take place in C Y twenty two, followed by construction and commissioning in C Y twenty three and twenty four. The line item number twenty three, okay, good, it's on screen. Uh, on page sixty three, uh we are asking one million, one hundred fifty six thousand dollars. Uh, this is an ongoing project and, and it's for grid modernization and optimization following the best business practices, the industry trend. This is a fifteen to twenty year program to upgrade and modernize the system switches, cap banks, skater systems, reclosers and eh et cetera, which uh started in F Y fifteen and continues through C Y thirty five. This project includes installation of the four Skater M eight switches and two interrupter smart switches in accord, in accordance with R M L D's documented technology roadmap, which we've gone over that over the past few years. A B B reclosers, cap banks, eh automations, V V O, M D M and communication devices. In C Y twenty one, communication study was performed, which recommended best means for field devices to communicate amongst each other and with the skater, because we're gonna need to bring this information back to the skater for processing and for automation. In C Y twenty two, we implement these recommendations in the amount of hundred fifty six thousand dollars. So that's for those lines that you saw, the yellow, highlighted in yellow. The next one is the line of twenty four on page seventy one. We're asking for one million, two hundred ninety one thousand for A M I mesh network expansion. In C Y twenty, R M L D hired a consultant to evaluate its current A M I A M R system, which is antiquated. Uh, the recommendation was to upgrade and replace Itron antiquated uh meters, eh the mesh network. And it has, because it has reached the end of its useful life, technology life, and is in, is in need of replacement. Uh, approximately thirty six hundred commercials and some residential meters, uh of Itron meters, basically, are incapable of uh sending last gasp messages when they're out. The, the last gasp message comes to the outage management system, so we can map off, uh, map out basically the area of the outage. Therefore, the outage management system cannot locate uh the outage when they're out. Uh, it was also recommended to install a new meter data management or M D M program to house the metering data and integrate with the A M I and Cogsdale C I S for implementing the demand response and demand site management programs for the I R D. The V E E and data analytic, that's what I R D needs in order to make sure that those programs are basically successful. In C Y twenty one, R M L D hired Katema Engineering to uh prepare the R F P uh for both M D M and A M I A M R systems. Uh, we're planning to install the M D M in C Y twenty two, uh budgeted as part of the grid modernization, approximately that two hundred fifty, two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And then A M I A M R system is gonna, is planned to be installed fully by, uh, from C Y twenty two to C Y twenty four. So the total cost for that is seven, seven million, six, six hundred forty five thousand dollars. The next one is line item number twenty nine. Okay, we are on the same page. Line item number twenty nine, page seventy seven, four hundred eight thousand dollars. That's a three W eighteen getaway improvement out of Station three. This project is the continuation from C Y twenty one to increase the feeder and pass the ratings for normal and emergency loading and lowering the losses. The total cost of this project is two hundred fifteen thousand. We did the similar thing at Station four in order to increase the, the thermal rating of the feeders out at Station four, lowering losses, which saves the rate payers money uh on, on that. The next one is the line item number thirty six on page seventy nine for seven hundred fifty one thousand. This is annual for transformer capacitors purchases. Basically, this line item covers the purchases of all stock, uh new constructions and reliability projects, including the age transformer replacement program, thirteen eight K V step-down conversions. That's another very important project to lower the losses, the system losses, which is gonna save money. And you are the up, the upgrades. The increase in the amount of three hundred thirty, three thousand dollars from C Y twenty one to C Y twenty two, it's due to increasing the single-phase and three-phase transformer inventory for our age transformer replacement program. In C Y twenty one, R M L D inspected and evaluated and scheduled the replacement of the transformers that are due to upgrade for load and poor physical conditions due to environmental impact. Starting C Y twenty two, we will annually inspect all transformers aged ten years and up, evaluate them, uh their physical conditions, load and historic transformer load data and schedule and prioritize their replacement based on the scorecard evaluation as needed. This year we found out that some of the younger transformers, you know, they, they, they basically, eh, they have started the, the faster deterioration that, you know, due to the poor material or what, whatever that you know was eh the condition of the soil. So we, that's why we're changing over twenty years or twenty-five years and up to, brought it down to ten years and up to, you know, to eh make sure that you know, we catch up, catch the transformers that are overloaded or they're in poor, poor physical conditions, uh to make sure that they're not gonna end up eh becoming eh environmental uh disaster. Uh, another item is the line item number thirty seven through forty one. These five categories of projects, they cost two million, four hundred seventy nine thousand. These are annual, basically, the long-term upgrade reliability projects. Uh, they do not include the cost of the transformers as the cost of transformer was discussed and actually included in line number thirty six on page seventy nine. These are the annual reliability upgrade projects to make reliability improvements that reduce outages and improve reliability indices. These projects basically include thirteen eight K V step-down conversions to support load and improve voltage delivery, underground facility upgrades, age transformer replacement programs and secondary and main and services upgrades to reduce overall system losses and improve operating conditions. The next one is the line item number forty two on page ninety one. Uh, for two hundred ninety eight thousand, it's a pole replacement program. This program started in two thousand fourteen by inspecting ten percent of R M L D poles in the custodial area uh to replace the poles that they have reached the end of their useful life. Every year, R M L D is testing approximately seven hundred to thousand poles in its systems. And since the inception of this program, R M L D has inspected four thousand seven hundred seventy four poles and will replace three hundred two poles, which five, five hundred forty one poles, eh they were identified, basically, out of that four thousand seven hundred seventy four uh for replacement. So basically, that's it. These are the major projects. Uh, uh, so if you have any questions or anything that I haven't discussed and you would like to get more information, by all means, please.
Alrighty.
I thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Hamid. That was, that was very informative. Wendy, if you'd like to continue.
Mr. Chair, do you want the motion on the uh, this budget first, on the capital?
Oh, yeah, if you want to, Phil.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we give that, because it's, it's two separate motions, so while we got it fresh in our mind.
Okay.
Must say that I, I got the preview when I attended last month's cab meeting, so um I saw the whole thing, so I'm in favor of it. Move is the Board of Commissioners on the, what?
Sorry, no, I just didn't know if they were ready either.
What? Oops, sorry, Dave.
Yeah, are we voting, are we voting on this budget right now?
Yeah, I thought we would.
Just Hamid's part, right?
Just Hamid's part, correct.
Uh, so that's capital?
Just the capital budget, yes.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Dave okay with it too? I mean, I can, we can hold it off if he wants.
Alright, let's move forward, Phil. Alright, that, that, that's fine. I was, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so move of the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation, the Citizens Advisory Board approved the calendar year two thousand twenty two capital budget in the amount of thirteen million, two hundred and twenty five thousand, five hundred seventy five dollars presented on the recommendation of the General Manager. Any significant changes that are submitted, uh to be submitted to the cab for review and recommendations.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Mr. President, aye.
I'm leaning to be to aye.
Albert, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye, passes. Okay, over to Wendy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hamid. Appreciate it.
Okay, good evening. Okay, so I'm presenting the um C Y twenty two operating budget. So I just like to remind everybody of the financial stra- strategic balance that takes place when we um try to pull this budget together. So we have to consider the balance of the impact of rate increases to the R M L D customers. We um typically, our expected rate of return is between four to eight percent and we, we try to get closer to six percent. Uh, we have to take into consideration funding the below-the-line Town of Reading obligation. We need to take into consideration funding capital projects with operating fund transfers. We need to maintain the operating fund at two to three months of monthly operating expenses. And we also have to be aware of the balance of the rate stabilization fund, how it fluctuates and the limits that uh have been, have been motioned in the past. And we always have to take into consideration the impact of power supply fluctuation. So with that, I like to, uh, this, this particular spreadsheet uh speaks volumes to everybody. Everybody seems to understand it really well. So we have fixed costs and we have semi-variable uh costs. So the fixed cost, basically what we're saying here is, is they're already contracted, you've already voted on them in uh different motions and that we can't change them. So power supply in particular, so the fixed cost is total seventy six percent of the bu, of the entire budget. Power supply in particular is nearly sixty six percent of the fixed cost. Uh, the depreciation expense, uh as Phil had said, is a three percent reserve and that is the minimum. And it's about uh five point five percent of the budget or uh five point one million dollars, which is a four percent, approximately four percent increase due to the necessary capital investments. The voluntary payment to the Town of Reading of two point seven three percent or two point five million dollars reflects the formula change commitment that we had agreed to, three point eight seven five mils of the three-year average kilowatt hour sales with an increase of nearly two percent. The town payments to the four towns of the two percent net plant of about one point seven million dollars or nearly two percent of the budget um is an increase of approximately three percent and that is uh due to the capital investments. So then, then of course, the um net plant increases. And then loss on disposal of assets is uh, you know, just under a quarter percent. So then we get into the semi-variable costs and this is where we have a little bit of wiggle room, but very little. So twenty four percent, nearly twenty four percent of the budget is semi-variable. So when you think about these top items here, uh labor costs with overtime and pension, uh employee benefits and pension and O P E B is all tied particularly to our three labor contracts. And um to remind you that employee benefits are tied to the town as well because we follow the town's um medical and dental plans. because we follow the town's medical and dental plans. So labor expenses, nearly 10 and 1/4% of which 1.6 is for capital projects or $9.4 million. Overtime is 1.12, which is less than 1/4% for capital projects. Employee benefits and pension, about 5% of which nearly 1% is for capital budget, capital projects. And then, you have your other operating maintenance expenses and efficiency and electrification expenses representing nearly 3% of the budget. And as Phil had requested, I will get into the other operating and maintenance expenses following this slide. And then, you have your tree trimming, contract services, software, hardware, maintenance, property insurance, each representing less than 1% of the total budget. And your legal expenses, vehicle, transformer maintenance, training, tuition, reimbursement, and rent expense, each representing approximately a quarter to a half a percent of the total budget. Okay, so I decided that I wanted to identify some significant increases. That way, it would be clear for you to understand. So labor is projected to increase by about 12 and 1/2% or $1 million. And as we have discussed, our increasing staffing levels to support ongoing strategic plans. We're noticing the competitive market value to retain and attract talent. And we are in negotiation year. And senior management does have an assumed contract increase embedded in the budget. We have 2022 retirees that are coming up. This is including as a slight overlap for training and succession. So we keep on some of the retirees to help us with training. At the same time, we're hiring before they retire. Our employee benefits and pension is projected to increase by approximately 6% or $274,000. And this, you know, this goes on with the increased staffing levels. And our OPEB and pension obligation payments come directly from our actuarial determinations. Other operating and maintenance expenses projected to increase about 19% or $414,000. And I will get into that further in more detail later about that. Efficiency and electrification expenses projected to double, about $1.2 million. Now, this stems from the motion of going from 1/10th of a percent to 3/10th of a percent on the efficiency and electrification rate. And this is to support the rebate programs to accelerate the adoption of the electrification for compliance with the Climate Bill. And it's to support more electrification to prevent less upward pressure on rates and promote in-territory solar installations. Our contract and consulting services projected to increase about 45% or $227,000. And this is taken into consideration in employee survey and market analysis and a feasibility study for solar projects. Software and hardware maintenance projected to increase 54% or $250,000. So we've discussed we have a co-location for a new data center and a second data center for disaster recovery. We're also working on a phone system migration to the cloud for better onsite support and better service of combined service providers. We have a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement that would afford us flexibility and freedom with levels of compliance through Microsoft applications. And we're looking for forward movement for continuous information security protection. Property insurance projected to increase about 14% or $67,000. And this is mainly because of the impact of the supply chain natural disasters in the hardened insurance market that we currently find ourselves in. Transformer maintenance projected to increase 67% of $145,000. And this is for cleanup and testing of hazardous material due to aged and decreased transformer life expectancy. And lastly, the training and tuition reimbursement projected to increase 28% or $72,000. This is to support our training for employee development and continued education and encourage higher education for continued growth and succession.
Second.
Okay, so then we Phil had got a preview of this at the CAB meeting, and he asked me to expand a little bit. So happy to help here. The other operating and maintenance expenses, as I mentioned, I broke them out for you, and you probably had an opportunity to look at the detail. Each division and then even the departments within the division, they have their own budget set aside for particular necessary items for the department itself, supplies and expenses directly related to the department. In particular, you know, the General Manager. You're talking about dues and subscriptions, Public Power Week, storm-related supplies. And each department, I don't know if you want me to go through this, each one. But, you know, human resources, I've listed everything in particular that relates to the cost. And Phil, you can speak to this. Is this exactly what you were looking for? You're on mute, Phil.
I think they're drilling for oil somewhere in the building. So I put myself on mute.
Yeah.
The, it's exactly what I was looking for. And there's nothing coming up after this, too.
Okay. So I'm not going to go through each, you know, each line item here, but I did provide all the detail. And if you had further questions, you know, you can ask me. And then, you can even ask me later if you had additional questions. But I'll just tell you, General Manager's expenses, about $90,000. Human resources, about $81,000. Community relations, approximately 76. Building maintenance, which is pretty much our biggest budget here, about $500,000. Material management, about $160,000. Engineering and operations, $31,000. The overhead and underground maintenance of the lines, $367,000. Station meter tech expenses, $326,000. Your information technology supplies and expenses, $50,000. Integrated resources, about $129,000. Business and finance, $191,000. Customer deposit interest expense, of course, when we hold customer deposits, we have to pay back that interest, $40,000. And customer processing fees, about $534,000.
This is fine, Mr. Chair. I mean, you know, I just didn't like the idea we had one big number. And I just wanted to see the breakdown of what was in there. So I'm okay with this as presented.
And we will learn from this going forward, Phil. So I'll make sure to capture this. And then, the legal expenses, Phil asked the same question to break it out by department and basically, what is the subject matter behind the legal expenses? And you may remember that I did a presentation on legal expenses and what was involved in it. So I just wanted to recap and review. General Manager is basically policy review. Any new updates and requirements on the policy language and compliance requirements, $25,000. Human resources and labor relations is related to negotiations, grievances, arbitration, staffing, labor law, and any kind of, you know, obviously COVID right now, and benefits. So that's $92,000. Engineering and operations, $90,000. We're talking about OSHA compliance, terms and conditions, service requirement handbooks, dark fiber, small cell attachments, and NERC compliance. Business and finance, $30,000. The audit letters that go to our legal counsel, GAZV compliance, DPU regulations, sales tax exemption, fraud prevention, and cash custodial responsibility. Procurement and liability, $60,000. We're talking about contracts, Chapter 30B, insurance updates and requirements, electric liability claims, and of course, the Wilmington substation land and your purchase power supply contracts, ISO litigations, FERC regulations, renewable energy certificates and portfolio standards, about $159,000. And one last thing that Phil had asked for, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood that you wanted it presented. So then, I just put it on this right here so we could see it, Phil. Is he wanted the CAB and the RMLD expenses for the last five years. So as I stated to Marlena in the CAB meeting, this stems from the 20-year agreement. Each budget is $15,000, the CAB and the Board of Commissioners. And each year, you can see what was spent combined. And this is for expenses. This is for staff-related time with the minutes. This is for NEPA conference or any kind of other related expenses directly related to the CAB and the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to this, please.
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. So here's the whole thing. I mean, the $15,000 was set up by the 20-year agreement. So I have no problem with having that in the budget. But you can clearly see, if you take the $15,000 out of here, the Board is not spending this money. I really feel it's, you know, maybe this is a crusade I've been on for several years, I guess, still. I really think it's really unfair that we're charging the ratepayers money that we're not spending. I really think we, you know, we should rethink about how we spend this money going forward, you know? And maybe, you know, we talked about the we talked about the sustainability, you know, director. Maybe some of this money could be used to study the sustainability director. Cleaning guy just come through. So if you see him on the camera, sorry. Okay. But I really think, you know, we should rethink how we're, you know, how the Board is spending its money. You know, as you can clearly see, we're not spending the $15,000 we're being allocated at this point. And it needs to be maybe something better because, you know, I mean, in the old days, we used to pay for spouses at conferences. We don't do that anymore. That's apparently against the law, from what I'm told. You know, so it really needs to be rethought about. Either we cut the budget that the Board is spending to what we're actually spending, or we come up with a better or we come up with some other way that this money could be used going in some other direction at this point. I know it's not a lot of money, but, you know, again, I feel it's unfair that we're charging $15,000 ratepayers that we're really not spending. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else want to comment on that?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I do. Oh, sorry, did Marlena want to say something?
I can wait.
Yeah, my comment was just going to be, I don't think, I think the only person who went to the conference this year, you went to the NEPA conference, right, Phil?
Yes, I did. I did. And someday, I'll actually send my expenses, too, for Erica.
Did anyone else go?
Dave, honestly, I was going to, but I could not. I had to work anyway, so it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
But I would have.
Yeah, so to Phil's point, I think I disagree that we should cut that budget. I think it's there for professional development. What I think to the spirit of what Phil's saying is that there may be other things we should be doing to expand our abilities and how we can support the department rather than just going to the NEPA conference. Like, I didn't go this year. I find, you know, I find it's, you know, it's good value for staff and it's some value for us. But we don't necessarily have to only go to that conference. We could go to others. So I would say, if we're not using the money, then we don't use the money. It doesn't get wasted. It just doesn't get spent. So I, but I think it's good to have it there and have the opportunity for professional development and education for all of us. It's only 15 grand, and we've never abused it that I know of. So that's my take. I mean, it's like, I think the previous two years, it might be like $800 or something to go to the conference. And that's the extent of what any one of us is actually, something like that. So anyway, but I would say we could take out of the box in terms of where we're going and what types of, you know, events we're exposed to, especially as the energy landscape changes. And there may be other things that we could do involving electric cars or electrification or other things other than go to the NEPA. Sorry, I didn't mean to go on so long. Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment, Bob?
Yes, please.
I agree with Dave. I just, I mean, COVID hit, and it was difficult with this hybrid, some people going and not. But this last NEPA meeting, the speakers there were fantastic. And I had wished that everyone was able to make it. But I do agree with Dave. Any type of training, and we can certainly help search for it as well, that can create a better sounding board and in more conversation between staff as we move through these, you know, changing times. I think it will help staff and the Commissioners. So as Dave said, if it's not spent, it's not wasted. But I would like to see the Commissioners have more opportunity to go to different things. Thank you.
Okay. Marlena, I think you were going to.
Point of information, a couple of things. Wendy, two slides back, you showed something with a 67% increase. And I just want to see what it was. I didn't catch it.
Yeah.
One more. One more.
67%. Okay, property insurance.
Transformer maintenance.
Yes.
67%.
There's a transformer maintenance project that we just added to the capital budget. And some of this is related to that. So it's just to test the cleaning, the testing the hazardous material. It sounds large, 67%. It's only in the grand scheme of it, $145,000 because the budget was lower in the past.
So.
Also, point of info. Oh, sorry, Bob.
No, Marlena, I was just going to let you know if you ever have a leaky transformer, one of the things you go up to it, you always have to test around the soil just to make sure there's no PCBs, even though you should know, based on the age of the transformer, you don't always. So sometimes, you want to just make sure you're testing what the materials are. You got to send it out to a lab, pre-standard operating procedure. So that, that's, I'm sure that that increase with more aged transformers or poor-performing transformers, you're going to need to up that budget. So that's kind of an explanation.
Thank you.
Another quick comment from Marlena. So just the maintenance and testing goes in expense, and then Hamid's replacement, if it doesn't test well or maintain well, goes into capital. I just wanted you to know that that's how it's separated into capital. I just wanted you to know that that's how it's separated so that if you're seeing transformers on both sides, Wendy's budget and Hamid's, the testing maintenance goes on that side, the capital replacement goes on that side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, Mr. Chair, point of information from Wendy in her part of the budget that is the miscellaneous line that shows, um, about a half million dollars that will increase 15% in this budget is kind of undefined. And I was wondering if that half million dollars will, more than that actually could be broken out and explained. It seems like a huge number to not understand better and discuss.
Which slide are you talking about, Marlena? So I can have it here.
It's not on the slide. It's 107 of the book you gave me.
Okay, let's see here.
Unless it's an upcoming slide, but it's not one you showed so far. It's in the general and administrative expenses section.
Okay. General and administrative expenses. Okay, hold on, I'm looking here.
Under O and M.
Um, do you have a number next to it? A FERC number?
Yeah, nine, three, zero.
Nine, three, zero?
Yes.
Okay. Miscellaneous general expenses. Okay. Um, it, it changed budget, the budget over budget. Are you talking about budget to budget or budget to actual?
Budget to budget.
Okay, budget to budget. So it went up, um, almost 70, uh, $74,000. Is that what you're speaking about?
Yep, the 15%. Yep.
Okay. And that is, um, nine thirty captures a lot of the, um, what it takes to process payments. So when we, when we take on more payments from our customers and we give them better opportunities to pay in different ways, that does cost us money. And I actually did speak to that on one of these slides right here. And I said I would come back to it. Um, no, I'm sorry. Yes, it's, so it's, it's in this right here, the, um, I'm lost right now because I, hold on one second.
I think at the bottom on the right. Is it under?
Oh, right here. Customer processing services, support payments, uh, needs and expectations. So that is part of that, Marlena. But if you want more detail, I can get it to you.
Okay, I just thought it was a lot of money for the ratepayers to not have more definition on. But now you're saying that it's part of customer payment processing and the different options.
Right.
But if that is earmarked under, in the O and M section, which is above this, general and administrative, then is it already captured in this O and M?
No, the total, the, okay, so the total operating and maintenance expenses, you're looking at the 580s, 590s. That's related specifically to operations. And then general and administrative is, is related to the administrative support and actually, uh, the business side of it.
Okay.
To clarify for you.
Okay.
So it is, when you look at this, when you look at this right here, the other operating and maintenance, it is combined. And that's why I broke it out. And, and I'll learn for next year. And I did break it out so that you could see what each department and division, what it belongs to. Like material, like our community relations is in your general and administrative, but your engineering is clearly in your operations side. So it is all combined here under that one line item on the, um, semi-variable costs. You follow, you follow what I'm saying? No?
I think, I think so.
Yeah. I can get you more information if you'd like.
Um, no, that's, thank you.
Wendy, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Dave. Nope, go ahead.
I didn't quite follow that. It, it's a $500,000 miscellaneous line item in the operating budget. And I, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow what the miscellaneous is for. Or please, if you don't mind giving it back to me in a sentence or two.
No, no, it's not, it's not. So it's called miscellaneous general expense. And the reason it's called that is because when we talk about FERC accounting, we take the FERC description from the FERC accounting, and that's what, that's what the description is called. But what it does is it captures expenses related to different areas of the administrative support within the, within the business side. If that makes sense to you, Dave.
I think so, yeah. So that means those, the details under it are, are spelled out somewhere else in the budget.
That's correct.
It's just, it's just lumped into that particular line item to follow a certain format.
That's right.
The FERC format.
The FERC accounting, that's correct. And that's for utility accounting.
Wait, can I, may I, Bob?
Yes, please.
We can run, uh, like, a little mini FERC accounting, uh, for the commissioners if you'd like, um, just to kind of say, you know, 300 series is capital, 500, 900 series is expense and kind of break it down. Because we, all utilities are the same. They all follow the same FERC accounting. If, if that would be helpful, please let me know. And we can have Wendy set something up. I think it, it helps to put things, um, so that you can find them easier.
I, I think that would be a great one. And it ties in what Phil was just saying. If they actually even develop another, for, uh, another accounting standard that, that might get integrated at any time.
Chair, um, on this, if we were to ever request a change to be made to the budget, it confuses me that we would have to petition or ask the CAB first. Is that correct? Because of the 20-year agreement? So we'd go back to them even though they already approved this? And I'm not looking to change something, but if I were to, just see how it's confusing.
Yes, you would.
Thank you.
I guess it would depend on what the change is. Um, but if you're adding anything, um, I guess, and it depends on what the topic is. If they feel like they're, they're also voting on what they feel is going to be the infrastructure improvements, um, you know, staffing vacancies. I mean, I guess it depends on the topic, but I would say that yes, any change, we would roll back to the CAB. They have 30 days, but we've been, uh, we give, I think we give such a detailed presentation that it's been going pretty quick for, for many years.
And I could see that more for an addition, you know, adding funds. But if we're asking, say, we were to ask something to be decreased or omitted, then it doesn't seem like we would have to, should have to go back to them.
That's why I'm saying that if you, let's say you're omitting an infrastructure improvement. You know, the other towns may want that. It's, it would be, you would want to bring that back to them and say, listen, we really don't feel like this should be done. Um, you know, certainly, we would have a discussion first, uh, on that to, to have a better understanding about why. We do spend an awful lot of time making sure that our costs are low, um, but we do want to keep up. Four towns is a large electric system. I mean, not quite as big as what Bob is, Colter's in charge of, but it's still a very large system to take care of. So we would want to understand what you would want to change and have that discussion. And then we can roll it back to the CAB. Yes.
Tell you, Marlena, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think this question, this question's come up in earlier years and it would, maybe it would be good if, if the board could get the first presentation on the budget, make sure everybody's kind of all, all set with it, then go to the CAB and then, and then back to us for the vote. That's, that would seem to, it's always seemed to me like that would be logical.
Um, that would be a change, though, Phil. I, I, I think it's, it's the opposite right now. So you'd have to change our, our agreement.
I mean, the CAB is advisory. They have 30 days in the 20-year agreement to review it. And, um, if the board wants to do something different, um, we would roll it back to them. But at the end of the day, if you wanted the change, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to vote. Because the CAB is an advisory recommendation.
Yeah, I wasn't proposing that we approve it before it goes to them. I was saying, if we could at least know and vet any questions, like Phil's question tonight and Marlena's, if that could happen before, it's already been approved by the CAB. Then some of those questions could get ironed out. And then all we'd be doing would be kind of, or maybe I'm misunderstanding something, why that couldn't work. And then we come back and vote after they vote. But I may be missing something. I probably am.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sure.
Well, I think Dave, Dave's got an interesting point. I mean, basically, the, you know, I attended the CAB meeting, even though it wasn't my turn to cover it, because I knew the budget presentation is going to be that night, and I got the preview. And that's where my questions rose from, from that presentation. Because I had more time to think about it and to kind of request information from the department. So I don't know how to facilitate that. Maybe we have a, a joint meeting or.
Yeah, maybe.
We just attend as, you know, as lookers on and get the presentation made to the CAB. I mean, I was kind of surprised the CAB didn't ask for the breakdown of the numbers that I asked for. It'd be quite truthful with you. I was a little bit surprised about that, but not my meeting. So I, you know, said nothing at that point. Um, but, you know, I, I did, in terms of that, you know, get a preview, and that's how I can move my questions at this point. So I think Dave's got a very good point. How we facilitate this, we're gonna have a lot to figure out.
Yep. Joint sounds like a.
I think a joint sounds good. I think that would work, a joint meeting.
You get, you get a joint, then you vote the next time.
Yeah.
Right? Because you get a preview of it, and then you can go back and do it again. And you'd have a much, a much further compressed, you could have a very compressed presentation, and then you could come back with questions.
Right.
Or changes.
Agreed.
I, I think maybe we'll, Dennis, I think we could, we could sit and talk to you guys and, and, you know, we could sit with the CAB and, and the CAB and have a, have a meeting with them and, and discuss that process flow.
Yeah, I think we'd be open to that. I mean, you know, going through it together and then voting on it separate, um, if there are any changes or, um, like some of the questions that have been asked tonight weren't asked at our meeting. But anytime someone brings something up, we all learn from it.
Yep.
Exactly.
You know, I, I know one comment, one, one interesting thing I, I just learned recently is Massachusetts is, we're in a new grow zone. So when you talk about, um, a budget increase, it's tree trimming. Um, tree trimming used to be on a, a five-year cycle. Fascinating. Uh, it is now when it should be on a three-year cycle now that Massachusetts grow zone has changed because it's a warmer climate. Trees are growing faster. And a traditional tree trimming operation would have, you know, probably done each feeder every five years and passed through. But now they're seeing a dramatic, uh, you know, increase. So that's, that, you know, that's something, it's a, an, an impact that you, you know, just, I, I did not realize, and I don't think a lot, it just came, came to. So, you know, kind of, you know, hindsight now, but maybe we need to rethink the tree trimming budget because that affects, you know, our reliability is fantastic. And, you know, keeping the lines clear is a, is a huge part of it. So I think, uh, you know, potentially that, that could be another upward budget pressure. But that, something, something that, how many can think about?
Ready for motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just make, I just have one last slide, if you don't mind. Talk about the rate increase. Okay, projected rate increases. Uh, so for the entire CY 22, uh, 2.2 to 4.7 projected overall rate increase, and this is for all rate classes, just so you understand. And, um, and the reason we broke it out is because the first half of the year, we had discussed this last year about supplementing some of the rate increase. And these will be filed rates, just so you understand. Some of the rate increase will be supplemented by the Rate Stabilization Fund of approximately 1.4% or 1.2 million dollars. And that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
Thank you.
Phil, if you could, please.
One last comment on the, the board's budget. I'm not saying that we should cut out the training. That's not my, my intent is. My intent is to say we need to rethink how we're spending that money. We ought to rethink how that money's being spent. But I'm not proposing that we cut it or cut out the training, but I'm proposing we rethink because we're just not spending that money. Okay, so I'll move the motion that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation to the Citizens Advisory Board approve the calendar 2022 operating budget with a net income of 2,533,000, oh, six, oh, as presented in the recommendation of General Manager.
Is there a second? Second? All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Albert, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Passes. Four to, nothing. All right. If we could please move over to the Integrated Resource Report. Uh, Greg, if you could, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. You guys can see the screen cover slide?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, um, obviously, um, most of this material was intended for October. Um, there's one additional item on power supply that we'll talk about relative to a solar opportunity. Um, but there are basically three topics I want to talk about tonight. Um, and we'll move fairly quickly through them. Uh, one is rates, and there's a motion on rates, and I'll kind of set the stage for that. Uh, second thing is certificates. And then there's two power supply, um, opportunities that, uh, we're looking for approval on as well. And I'll move fairly quickly through these. So, um, obviously, back in August and September, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about rates and the rate structure, et cetera. Um, as we talked about, we had done a, we had completed a cost of service study, um, which we're required to do. Uh, we also had made, um, I wouldn't say extensive, but a lot of analysis relative to the rates. Um, as Phil mentioned in the very first point, um, this is a not-for-profit entity. So the rates are intended to cover the cost associated with running the operations. So the budgets that you just approved, um, these rates basically tie to the budget. Um, as normally, we would do all the rate stuff after the budget. Um, but we had quite a bit of work to do. So we appreciate the opportunity to, back in uh, August and September, to walk through the details of the rate changes. So at the end of the day, I'll walk, I've got two slides to talk about and then the motion. Um, but this is basically a summary of what we've talked about in the past. Very slight adjustments from the August and September to make it match the final budget that Wendy and Hamid presented. Um, as you guys know, there are five primary rate classes. And what we intended to do and what we structured is to, uh, to lay out the, oops, let me just back up. Sorry about that. Um, but the rate structure, the residential, the two residential rates, the time of use, which is the A2, as well as the regular residential, the commercial, the industrial, um, which is the time of use in the school. I'm not sure why my little note there, workbook class modified is in front, but that's okay. Um, so there is the current rates, um, or what it looked like with the current load. That's that center column, um, of a total average monthly bill, and then the proposed. On the far right-hand side, you have, uh, in that box, the dollar change and the percent change. And, uh, as you saw on the previous slides, where Wendy kind of wrapped up, the range is 2.2% in the case of the school. But that's that bottom row up to 4.7 in the residential. As we have mentioned before, um, the reason for these, these are very modest increases, obviously. Um, I shouldn't say obviously, that's our opinion, right? We worked hard to, to, uh, to make the, the balance between the different rate classes, um, fair, um, meet the legal compliance elements that we had to. Um, but as you noticed from the previous discussions, the electrification, which is driven by the climate bill, that's that first bullet across the bottom, that's basically pushing more investment to the distribution network. That's part of the discussion that Hamid mentioned with the, uh, the acceleration of the network upgrades. And as you guys know, um, from previous discussions, when we think about uh, the network upgrades, we're looking, you know, 15, 20, 25 years down the road. So transformers that get put in, you know, this year or next year are intended to be there for at least 20 years. Um, so that's why we, we look down the road in terms of thinking about the network upgrade. The other thing that we talked about, um, which we had approved previously, but the EEC, which is basically the incentive fund to drive the electrification, those are intended to drive the, uh, changes in behavior. Um, as mentioned before, we, um, had talked about back in August, moving that from, uh, a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent. Um, so I'll show you in a table here just a minute the implication of that. Um, but at the end of the day, um, this is a quick summary of what we've talked about in September and, and August. Um, I'm not going to walk through the details on this. The reason I wanted to give you a, a quick snapshot here, this is the same slide that we talked about back in September. Um, two key takeaways, right? As I just mentioned, the load growth is driving our, um, distribution energy, the dollars for distribution energy, which fund the, uh, the upgrade of the network. That's primarily, as we've talked back in August and July, that's primarily driven by the growth that is accelerating initially in the residential space. So that's why the residential number is closer to 4.7% versus the industrial and the commercial, which are just, just below 4%. Um, what we had done, these boxes at the very bottom here, these are the different rates that we had already approved back in August and September. But that EEC charge, right? It looks like a measure, a massive increase, you know, 200%, but we basically moved it from three, a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour to three tenths of a cent per kilowatt hour. And keep in mind, relative to the different funds that the IOUs need to collect, they're collecting in the range of 1.7 cents. So it's, uh, almost six times higher than what we're doing. Um, and obviously, we try and manage those funds very carefully in terms of the incentive programs that drive the electrification. But that's old news. Um, the real focus for tonight, um, in the package that you had, were these five rates, the residential rates, the commercial, um, the industrial and the school rates. And again, the key drivers here in this right-hand column is, um, basically the distribution and the ECC are the primary drivers behind each one of those. On the website, um, and also in the back of the package that you receive, were not only the rates, um, but also the examples. And I will just take a quick second. But we, this is kind of already on there, but we walked through in the past each one of these to give you a little bit more detail of what each one was. So I won't, unless there's questions, I won't walk through those. But I basically wanted to just, two key things. One is, again, these rates are intended to, um, reflect the uniqueness of each, um, rate category, the residential versus the commercial versus, versus the industrial versus the school. And that was driven by the cost of service analysis that we did. And then the second thing, the primary growth is driven again by the distribution and the EEC charges. So that's kind of the big picture. Um, so if there's any questions, great. But what we're really asking for tonight is, because now that the budget is done and these rates support the budget, is if there's any discussion, then go to the motion to approve the rates. I'll pause for a moment.
Any comments? Okay. Hearing done. Um, and based on the CAB having approved, Phil, could you read the motion?
Go ahead. Move to the Board of Commissioners and the Recommendation Citizens Advisory Board. Vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to replace the following MDPU rates effective on billings on or after January 1st, 2022. Replace 279 residential schedule A with 296. Replace 280 residential time of use schedule A2 with 299. Replace 282 commercial schedule C with 297. Replace 293 industrial time of use schedule I with 298. Replace 284, uh, school schedule SCH with 300.
All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, uh, we can go on.
I'll continue.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, we're in the process of, uh, of doing all the inputs into, or getting ready to do the inputs into the Coggedale system. And, uh, we'll do all the filing as well here, um, in the month of December. So thank you for that. Okay. Um, as you guys know from the previous discussions, um, each quarter, uh, we're going to report on the certificate management. Um, and so now these are second quarter of 2021. Um, we're actually in, in process of processing these. Um, but we had an opening balance, remember, but I'll walk through that in just a second. But, um, we acquire certificates based on the, um, power that we purchase or the energy that we purchase with the associated certificates. And you guys remember that currently, we buy certificates only with associated power. So we don't buy in the open market, we just do associated power. So in the second quarter of 2021, we acquired a little over 59,000 certificates. And again, remember, the certificates are one certificate per megabyte. We bought more power in that quarter, but the ones that had certificates associated were 59,000. Um, we're retiring for the policy to, uh, bring us up by the time we get to the end of the year. Um, we'll be retiring 23% of our purchases, I mean, of our sales, um, uh, will be retired for our policy, um, this second quarter. And our policy was to basically manage these on a quarterly basis. So we are going to be retiring roughly a little bit over 35,000 certificates. So we are going to be retiring roughly a little bit over 35,000 certificates. Then the balance, which is the sum of that 23,000 and the 3,600, we're going to sell 23,000 and then keep an ending balance of the 3,600. So that, that 3,600 is just to allow us, because our load changes quarter to quarter, you know, summer months tend to be a higher load due to the air conditioning, the shoulder months tend to be lower, so we keep that balance. But by the time we get to the end of the fourth quarter, which will be next spring, we're going to make sure that we either retire or sell all the certificates from 2021. Because if you remember correctly, if we don't, whatever we don't transact in June of 2022, of 2021 certificates, we forfeit. So we're not going to let that happen, we're going to manage these pretty aggressively. At the end of the day, these, the selling these certificates, that, that 2,305.09, will net roughly about 500, a little over, depending upon what the actual market is, there's a little bit of volatility of these certificate values, but it'll be roughly about 520, maybe $540,000. And again, that gets applied back to the purchased power budget. And again, so that kind of dampens the up and down volatility of that. And then, of course, we bank the rest of it. So it's, I just, I want to keep you guys updated in terms of what goes on. When we get to the end of the year, I'll probably have a quarterly update and also an annual update. So I'm committed to letting you guys know what we're doing, and we're in process. So that's, that's the certificate. I want to jump to power supply now, unless there's any questions on certificates. All right. Power supply, two power supply discussions tonight. This one is for offshore wind. And just for context, you guys have heard about the large 7,000-megawatt, going to maybe 15,000-megawatt arrays. When I say arrays, wind arrays off the coast, primarily the coast of southern Massachusetts. To put things in perspective, the current maximum load last year for all of New England was roughly around 25,000 megawatts. So these, these wind projects are significant when they ultimately get built. Currently, of that first 7,000-megawatt block, the MLPs up until right now have not had a chance to participate in those projects, to bid, to take part of the outtake of those projects. So what ENE has done in concert, and you'll see the pressure of these tomorrow, assuming we approve this, we highly recommend we should. But at the end of the day, Vineyard Wind has a, an array, and due to their anticipated purchase, again, this won't happen until 2026, 2027, but they're likely to be installing turbine systems that are higher power than they originally planned. And so they've got a, they've got a small, and I say small, out of that 7,000 big block, there's a little 25-megawatt sliver that the MLPs can collectively participate in. This is really a foot in the door for us. So ENE basically has helped orchestrate this. There are 20 MLPs that would like to participate in this little program. So that 20% of that, or that, we'd be 1/20th of that 25 megawatts. Again, it's rounding area in our budget. However, we do want to participate in it, we want to get our foot into the door. So what we're asking you to do is to allow us to participate in the bid that ENE has submitted. So we want to officially be part of that bid. It'll be announced and evaluated in December of this year. It, it, it is, it's a good thing for us to be participating in, but it's not going to move the needle. However, we're also, as part of this power supply motion, we're going to, we're going to continue to push for opportunities on this offshore wind projects. And so what we're really looking for is authorization to participate in this first one, which is just a sliver, but authorization to do up to 15% of our portfolio over the next 24 months. So as we come across projects, we want to be able to move fairly quickly, because these, these are moving fairly, the opportunities open and close quickly. So anyways, that's the big picture. We, we want to participate in the first one and have the authorization to participate in more, if we can find them, up to the limit of either 15% and 24 months. So that's kind of the big picture. Questions? And there's a, there's a bunch to this, but that's kind of the big picture.
Yeah. Chair, can I add a couple of things?
Yes, please.
So I just want to make sure everyone's clear. DOER will be evaluating the proposals. There's two proposals coming in, one from Vineyard Wind slash Commonwealth Wind, and the second one is from Mayflower Wind. So we've gotten the excess, and when Greg says the excess, what we really mean is like, if it's calculated out that it's supposed to be a 12-megawatt turbine, and it ends up being a 13-megawatt turbine, like each turbine, 13 megawatts, that's where the excess is coming from. And the DOER will decide whether or not the MLPs will actually win. Some people have called it a lottery, it's actually a bid solicitation that comes under Massachusetts procurement laws. So that's why we've been very careful about press releases. We didn't even want to say we could be part of this bid until we got your approval. So I just, it's not a guarantee December 17th, but since they only have two proposals, we got word today that it might even be sooner that they'll make a decision.
Correct.
Wanted to clarify that. Oh, and also, the, the press release that come out prior said 425,000-megawatt hours. And I had some customers call on the phone saying, "That's amazing", because they didn't understand the difference between megawatt and megawatt hour. So we're, so Greg and Joyce are clarifying that for me tomorrow in the press release, so no one misunderstands that, right? 25 megawatts divided by 20 of us is probably a foot of one football field blade for this round. So it's not much, but it may set a precedence. It may set a precedence all the way up the East Coast, is the way we're looking at it.
Running wind power.
Right.
There you go. All right.
All right, so Chairman, it would be good if we vote on this one, and then I'll, we'll take the separate motions, so.
Excellent, excellent.
I just had one quick question, if I may. Can I say something?
Oh, yes, please.
I don't think you need the little phrase there about subject to environmental justice in the motion, because I don't think that's really, that doesn't really apply to offshore wind project. I understand the spirit of it, of wanting to do this, but I think in this case, it almost like, you just don't really, you don't really need it. And I don't, I don't really understand what it would mean in this context.
It was intended for the spirit, so we're happy to delete it if they want, when you do the motion, no problem. We agree.
I think so. I, I think so, yeah, because let's, let's keep, that does have meaning in some contexts, but not in this one.
Agreed.
Dave, we agreed to put that in, that was one of our.
Yeah. Right, I think it should stay in. I think it's being vetted out by the federal government and the Massachusetts State Environmental. They're vetting it out for us. But, you know, so fish and fishermen and, you know, everything, right? I'd like to keep it in there, but I think it's going to be pre-vetted.
Okay, then I think, I think you should just remove the word "justice", because that's a whole different animal, forgive the pun. But if it's about environmental concerns, i.e. fish, you know, whales or whatever, birds, then yes, that's an environmental concern. Environmental justice means when, you know, a power plant goes up in a poor neighborhood in a, in a city. That's, so this isn't environmental justice, it's just environmental. So that, can we clarify it to that extent, you just say environmental concerns?
I actually had called the state, and it's social justice and environmental justice is what they were calling it, because I know we had this conversation before. I mean, I think we can change it to meet the intent of, of what you would want in Policy 30, but I did look it up, and they said that that was technically, you could use that.
Okay.
It's a justice to the fish, it's a justice to the people in the, in, I don't know, but that's the term they said we could use. But I'm, I'm glad to change it, but I did look it up.
All right. I, I, somehow I doubt it applies to offshore wind and social justice, but I mean, I mean, I defer to what you're saying. I just want to make sure when we use these terms, we're using the right ones for the, for the context. So I defer to your decision on this. So if you want to leave it, go ahead.
Sure. Okay, Phil, could we read the motion?
Very good. Move to the Board of Commissioners, the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to execute a contract with Commonwealth Wind for energy, include associated certificates from an offshore wind facility off the southern coast of Massachusetts, contingent on appropriate environmental justice due diligence.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Mr. Coulter, aye. All right, passes four to zero. All right. Moving on to item number eight. Thank you.
Oh, I got, I got one. So I've got the last power supply piece. So this is for a solar PV system, that's a land-based system. This particular one is associated with the project that we approved back, that we asked for approval and, and was granted by you, thank you, back in July. This is a solar PV array at the Seabrook, New Hampshire site. The original approval was for up to 5 megawatts, and that original system was intended to be approximately 4.5 megawatts AC. And we're in the process of doing that LOI right now, but they, they've been doing work on that site, and there's a possibility, or there's not more than a possibility, there is an opportunity for us to increase that size of the array with a adjacent part of the, the land at that Seabrook site, to go up over 9 megawatts AC. So it's the same basic system, same basic array, same basic interconnect. If it's the, if it works out to be that we have approval to do the full system, the full 9-plus megawatts AC, that total volume would be about 16,000-megawatt hours per year. That's about 2% of our total energy purchases. We would have 100% of the, of the array output. 16,000 megawatts out of our purchases of just under 700,000 is not huge, obviously, 2%. We like to do things that are 30,000-megawatt hours per year or larger. But again, this is solar, and we're trying to get our hands on, on solar arrays. This would be a 30-year term commissioning, they're trying to move for moderately quickly, but commissioning Q4 2023. It would have Class 1 certificates, primarily because it's solar, which means it's both non-carbon and renewable. Obviously, we've got to hit the non-carbon compliance, and this would allow us to collect additional certificates for our renewable choice. The prices are slightly below the average cost we have right now in our solar-only portfolio. And as you guys know, most of the renewable non-carbons average roughly about 50% higher than the total portfolio. And that, the comparison there is, obviously, the fossil fuel-based natural gas stuff tends to be a little less expensive in the current market. Anyways, it's favorably priced, it's in addition to the, the original one that we got approval for. You'll note in the motion, when we get to that, that we're asking for up to 12 megawatts. And the reason why it does, it's not 9 megawatts, it's 12 megawatts, is there are, there continue to be increases in the efficiency of the individual panels, which would allow them potentially, when they order the panels in 2023, that they might be 500 or 550 watt per panel, panels, which would mean for the same area, we might be able to get 10 or 10.5 or 11 megawatts of output. So that's why, just so you know, why the current proposal is nine, we want to have a little room to be able to get bigger, if they can put a bigger system in. So that's the, that's the background on this particular project. It's a solar, terrestrial solar PV power supply PPA. Questions?
Might be not. Are the Class 1s still about $40?
Yeah, actually, they're roughly about $40 right now. They were, about a month ago, they're around 42, and they're back down around $40.50. We track them literally weekly, well, twice a week. But yeah, that's roughly where they are. And, and we actually, just so you know, are they in a week? We've done some, we basically have a forecast that goes out. We have a very specific forecast that goes out four years, that we've talked about in the past. But we also did a little trial of a subscription service that allowed, that basically gives us forecasts out to 2029. So there's a little dip. If the wind really comes in in 2027, 28, there might be a dip down to $32, $35, but that's only if the, the wind projects really come in as fast as they are. But $40 is a good number for right now.
And if it did dip, would you consider buying them in the open market? I think you said before that you don't want to do that, or you don't do that right now.
Yeah, so we want to avoid that. We tend to, if we buy them associated, we tend to get a little better deal. We don't play in the arbitrage market, you know, I'd say, we don't play in the open market. But more importantly, we want to do associate as much as possible, because as the entire, well, in this case, Massachusetts with the climate bill, as we get to 2030, where it's 50%, and then 2040, 75%, and then 2050, you know, net zero, non-carbon, the, the value of those certificates become higher, because everybody's got a, everybody has to have non-carbon certificates as we get further out. So we keep an eye in terms of planning the cost of the power supply. But our intention is to try and collect with all of the projects that we do going forward as much as possible, associated. And we're trying to avoid doing market purchases. But if we have to, to meet, just on a sideline, we've had discussions with Analog these past two months relative to the Renewable Choice Program. We had a more complicated program to allow them to meet their renewable, or their sustainability targets. They like the concept of the Renewable Choice for them, so we're actually moving through. Now, they're fairly sizable, we should be able to handle them. But if all of our industrials jump into it, and all of our customers, then we'd have to do some purchases. But right now, we don't need to. So anyways, long-winded question, we don't want to, but if we need to, we will.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Chairman, if you wanted, yeah, so that's it for me. Just a little motion on that particular one, this one.
Yeah. We don't have a preset motion. So Phil, do you have one?
Yeah, I got the motion.
Yeah, we should.
I got the motion. I just have one question. Vivek asked a question about the 100% and competitiveness. I didn't quite understand. Can you kind of clear that up, what Vivek was asking about in the CED?
So as, as you guys remember, we, we asked back in September for a broadleaf solar array that ENE was basically assembling several MLPs to be part of that program. And so we're participating in that when you approved our vote to do roughly 27,000-megawatt hours. But we're sharing that array with, I think, seven, maybe eight other MLPs. We, we are actively, we as RMLD are proactively, we certainly, when people come and say, hey, look, I've got a, you know, I've got a project, I'm interested in buying some of it, we certainly entertain those ideas. But because we see a shortage of opportunities as we get out five or six or seven or eight years, and again, these projects take a little time to, to have interconnection studies and permits, et cetera, we're actually out aggressively looking for these. So, so this particular one, we, we basically, we're pursuing it. We're actually looking at three other potential projects that we might bring to you in December. And in each case, we want to try and get as much of the output as we possibly can. There is a scenario, Phil, that we'll talk about probably in the springtime, where we as RMLD consider owning assets, you know, taking a portion of them, and that basically is for risk management on price. Similar to what this is, you know, we're doing risk management here, because these are 25 or 30-year contracts. But we'll talk about that later. But there's going to, I don't say there'll be a shortage of solar. We're just making sure that we have access to non-carbon sources as we continue to build out our portfolio going out five, 10, 15, 20 years.
Very good. Okay. Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Move to the Board of Commissioners, the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to modify a power supply contract with Nextera for energy, including associated certificates, to increase the size of the previously approved solar array from up to 5 MW to up to 12 MW for a solar PV system at the Seabrook nuclear facility site, contingent on appropriate environmental justice due diligence.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Alba, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Quick comment request. We could, Hameed, please.
Yes, sir. Phil, you, you want to read the motion?
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Move that IFB 2021-19 for janitorial services be awarded to S.J. Services, Inc., for $119,424 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30B, as the lowest responsive, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation, General Manager. This is a three-year contract.
Yes, sir. So this, this bid basically is the S&amp;J Services that had this contract for three years in, in the past, and we sent this bid to 40 companies, only four responded, three were non-responsive, and only S&amp;J Services came out to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder that basically took no exceptions. So this includes the pricing for the janitorial services to be performed at RMLD's office and operations buildings, service center, garage, and also the lease, lease warehouse that are all located in Ash Street in Reddy. It's a three-year contract, basically. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, how much is the contract?
The contract total amount for that is $119,424.
To be paid over.
Forty, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, so it's $40,000 a year to clean the headquarters building?
Well, yeah, it, it is. The $38,720 for the year one, $39,824 for year two, and $40,880 for year three. That comes out to a total of 119,424. The last time that the contract went out, I mean, from 2018 to 2020, it was $100,646. So it's gone up by almost $19,000.
And I, I, I never like when there's only one, I understand that sometimes people don't respond, and, but a janitorial service, I feel like, I don't know, is our bar too high that people can't meet all the terms, you know, for cleaning the building? I mean, I just wonder if that's the, like, why, why were people not able to meet the, the bid?
No, four people that responded, Dave, out of the 40 companies, but you know, they only, you know, they didn't, there's some of the, they took exceptions, you know? So, and some of the bid packages did not include, for instance, all the required documentation that, you know, we asked for, like liability insurance and, you know, all of those paperworks. And some of them, they didn't include the detailed plan that is, that is specific to RMLD, and some of them, they didn't, they didn't have their, they had unauthorized signatures. They just, you know, put it together, send it without, you know, having a responsible party, authorized person to sign that document.
What, what was the lowest bid? Granted, they didn't, they didn't do all that, but what was the lowest bid, just out of curiosity?
Well, I don't have that, if I can get that information for you, but I have the information, actually, it is on the board over here, the three, the four people that they responded. One, they just responded zero for each year, they didn't, they, they just didn't submit the bid. Partner Solution General submitted, the total amount was higher, was $134,921, and Star Building Services was $123,956. But among the ones, the others, yeah, the other, this is the only four that we have.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't hear so well, because I'm on the phone, and I apologize for that. So they're all, they were all, they all came in around 120 or so?
Yes.
They were all in the same, okay.
Yeah, they, actually, they were higher. The other two were, you know, 123, 124,000 and 134,000. So one was $5,000 more, and the other one was almost $15,000 more.
Then, then, then it makes sense to me. I mean, the reason I'm being like, you know, I, I can understand being really picky about engineering stuff, but for janitorial services, but since the price is good anyway, you know, it's all good. So thank you for, thank you for the discussion.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you want to just go through all, all four, and then we'll vote for all four, or do you want to?
I'll do them one at a time.
One at a time, Phil? All right, okay, let's take the motion.
I don't think you've got a second on the motion, Mr. Chair. I don't think you've got a second on this motion.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Alba, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Okay, moving on to Item IFP for substation spare equipment. If you could, please, Phil?
Yep. Move that IFP 2021-20 for substation bare equipment be awarded to Stewart-Cirby Company for $49,873.89, and Wesco Distribution, Inc., for $6,956. I guess that should be one cent, I'm gonna say, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, 61, Chapter 164, Section 560, and recommendation, General Manager.
Yes, these are the spare parts for all substations. Some of them, they're long-leading items, you know, like bushing of the transformers, LAs, PTs, CTs, these are the ones that, you know, just in case you have a premature failure or there's a problem with one, you're gonna have to wait for a long time, and we can't really, we should have a spare part. So everybody, basically, we sent to 14 companies, only four responded, and, you know, Stewart-Cirby Company quoted the lowest cost for five of the six items. Wesco quoted for item number five, the lowest, and no code were received for item number two, which was the 400 amp 88 KV rated transformer bushing. And because that's so old, that we're gonna have to go to secondary market in order to be able to get the, the part for it.
Yeah.
So the total amount comes out to be $56,829,098, which we have the, in the capital budget, we have had $1,000. It came out lower.
Excellent. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Alba, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Okay, moving on to our next item. If you could, please, Phil?
Move that IFP 2021-23 for number two CU 15 KV underground cable, and number two STR CU1 COND 600V XHW cable be awarded to Arthur J. Hurley Company, Inc., for $94,725 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 164, Paragraph 56D, on the recommendation, General Manager. Mr. Chair, I have to abstain on this one, because Arthur Hurley is a client of a client. This probably puts a nickel in my pocket, but I have to abstain from voting on this to be, for the record.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay.
Okay, this IFP is basically calling for number two copper cable, 15 KV for underground, URD systems that we have in all four communities, and also the number two stranded copper cable, 600 volts for the secondary. So this is, this is, we sent a, we sent a bid to eight companies, only three responded, and the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was Arthur Hurley for $94,725 on both items, on both the 600 volts cable and also the 15 KV cable.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Marlena Vida, aye.
Mr. Alba, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Motion passes. On to the next item. Please, if you could, Phil?
Okay, move that RFQ 2021-19 for pickup truck with dump body and material spreader attachment with trade-ins be awarded to Liberty Chevrolet for a net delivery cost of $65,774. Parents, $68,774 minus $3,000 for trade-ins, quote, and parent, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 34B, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder on the recommendation, General Manager.
Yes, on this one, on the first line, actually, we sent a bid out twice. First, it went out on May 21st, May 20th, to, May, May, May 2021, I'm sorry. It went out, and we got two responses that we received, and both were non-responsive, and we decided to clarify the specs and seek codes from statewide contract VEH98. So the second time around, on September 2021, in September, we requested codes from statewide contract VEH98, and that's a list of vendors that everybody has an access, and, and now we, we go there and use our state-approved contractors or vendors. We sent to six vendors, one response was only received from Liberty Chevrolet. However, it was an alternative to VEH98. It is a cooperative contract with the Greater Boston Police Council, GBPC, who Liberty has a contract with, and the town of Reddy is also a member. So right then, getting the VEH98 vendors list of the statewide contract, we, we used, actually, they, they, they decided to bid under the GDPC, which is perfectly fine, and they had the, some, some of these, these trucks are long, there's a long lead item on these, and they, they had ordered some for, for the police and for the other towns. They had one extra, and that's the one that, I guess, we were lucky to catch it before, before it goes to others or... So this is what the story is on this truck. We are trading three obsolete trucks, actually, that we are retiring those, they're being traded. So the alternative, it would be, there are no other alternatives at this time regarding the electric or no PHEV. And also, however, what, what, the advantage of this bid is that, you know, well, it's reducing the fleet size by two, and it's gonna bring cost savings in fuel and repairs to RMLD. So that's the story for that.
Okay, any discussion? Hameed, you said you retire in three, and you're only buying one.
Yes. Oh, these are the ones that, the three that we had, there was one vehicle, 38, 2006, and there was another one, 2007, 2000, they were all rusty, and they're all, you know, they're not obsolete, because of the age and the condition of the body, and they need engine works and all kind of repairs that, you know, the repairs that they, they are more than what they worth.
Yeah, no, I, I just was wondering why, why there was only one vehicle for, for trading in three?
Well, this is what we had in the, in the, the ones, the category that, you know, we can, we could trade in, in and get into the older inventory. So, and they're basically not unusable. So we got $3,000 for them, just, just for the basic, you know, what it worth.
Oh, yeah.
For a metal, probably.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Alba, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. All right, that passes. Thank you, Hameed.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, scheduling. I think December doodle poll, but I think we had the 20th. Is that a date people were kind of landing on?
Yep.
Fine.
Be fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too.
On the 20th. I'm sorry.
I think it's a Monday.
It's a Monday? Any objections to go into a 6:30?
So the only thing is, I just don't know if the cab is planning to go before we were, and if we needed to allot time for them, but if they aren't going before this meeting, then that's flexible, but if they are, it would probably have to be a little later, around 7:00.
You know what? My, my bet, Dennis, I'll take, I'll pull that back, and if you, if you want to do the 20th, then I, as well, then we'll start at 7:00.
Yeah, we, we had planned for the 20th at 6:00.
Okay.
We can do 7:00.
7:00, okay. All right. All those in favor of the 20th?
Yeah, we're good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Excellent, all right.
Chairman, any quick question? Before you do that, I have a quick question. Speaking of the holidays, I, we have discussed in the past the, the possibility that, is there a way to sponsor, like, another ratepayer's, you know, Renewable Choice? It's been in the back of my mind, you know, is that something that we could ever actually do, that one, one ratepayer could, could absorb the optional cost of the other ratepayer's energy? And I just, not that you have to have an answer tonight, but maybe by the next meeting, is this, is this something that conceptually can happen? And then, if so, if we made, if we just made an announcement at the next meeting, that could be something people did for the holidays?
Like a, like a good citizens' fund?
Something like that.
A neighbor program.
Yeah, or, or I know it's come up before, I've mentioned it, I know John's mentioned it in the past, you know, maybe not quite like that, but if, if it was something that's possible to do from a legal perspective, you know, because I think, what, what was the average, $27 to get, to get up to 100% green? If people were willing to pay for a neighbor, or have that be a Christmas or other holiday present, that'd be kind of fun. Anyway.
Good thought, yeah.
Kind of fun.
If, if it were, if, if it was just, if it was something we could check on and maybe find out at the next meeting, I mean, why not? I know it's a little bit out of left field, but just want to ask.
I, 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 because you put it into a general fund, it would, you know, you'd, you'd have to have qualified, you know, accounts that would have to be able to get into that money, so that would be much more of a thing where, but if it was a, hey, I want to pay for my neighbor, you might have to target it. I, I, I don't, there's a, there's a whole bunch of ways to, but I, I don't know. Great question.
There's probably a lot of, there's probably a lot of willingness of, of some people to do more, even more than the $27, right? But there, there might be a lot of people who aren't willing to do anything, and we know there's both in the community, so why not leverage, if people do want to do a lot more, they can? And have, I don't know, some, some mechanism for doing this.
Well, I, I think at one point, again, probably ancient times, we used to sell gift certificates, pay for your electricity, gift certificates.
Okay.
That did exist.
Well, that's interesting.
That did exist.
So maybe, maybe you could do the, it could be a Renewable Choice certificate.
Yeah, exactly.
People, and then, and then you're giving it under the, under the tree, and then the person just brings it down to RMLD, and boom, they're enrolled in Renewable Choice for a year. It only costs you 200 bucks.
You better not print, you better not print a Renewable Choice certificate, that's a big one.
Are you joking? I don't, I can't see your expression.
Yeah, that was, that was a joke, yes, that was a joke.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little tired, I'm not picking.
A little dry, a little dry.
Like a counterfeit rec, in other words. So anyway, just thought I'd throw it out there, if, if there was a way to see if there were any ideas, and if we could get something at the next meeting, if there was a way to do this, it would be, it would be nice timing, right, on December 20th?
Yeah. A good, green.
I will look into it and just probably send out an email, I think it's a great idea, but let me, again, let's look into what we're, what we can do.
Okay.
Dave, I got, I got the name, good, green neighbor.
There we go.
All right.
So.
Okay. Good way to end. Okay, I turn my action item. Phil, if you could. Okay, retirement action item. Phil, if you could.
Yeah, move that the Board of Commissioners adjourn the regular session.
All those in favor?
How about a second?
Second, aye.
Mr. Pacino?
Colter, aye. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, yeah.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.